It was seven o'clock on Wednesday, August 30th, and I will call the zoning board of appeals. I have with me tonight Brian Solace, Jim Dietrich, myself, Sarah Mallon, John Zahn, Rob Scott, and John Bananas. Tonight, since this is Rob's first meeting, we will be participating but not voting, so the remaining five members will be the ones voting on the two applications tonight. And the way we work is I'll open the public hearing, read the motion, and then I'll ask them to present their project, then the board will ask questions, and then we'll see if there are any comments. With that, I will open the public hearing for the application of Peter Lavassar of Phase Two Design Studio on behalf of Lucy Nois for a special permit under sections 5.4 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to renovate an existing non-conforming structure which encroaches into the side setback by adding thirty-eight square feet on the first floor between the two existing sections of the structure and constructing a second floor addition over that section of the first floor, creating two hundred and eighty-eight square feet additional living space. At Two Pulaski Drive, Assessors Map Number Forty-One, Lot Number Forty-One in District B, filed with the town clerk on July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. So would you like to introduce yourself and present your project?
I am Peter Lavassar. And the, so we have a strong. So as you can see, the site plan, as you just described, the only new square footage of the coverage is that center. The preseason porch to the north of that is going to be removed and replaced with a proper crosswalk. The side yard setback is fifteen, it encroaches within the sixty, but side yards in fact. But a lot configuration as it is, it's where the addition is going to be, ends up being about twenty-eight feet off the side yard, and I understand you have to go by the worst case scenario, so like, so that was what mentioned it. You go through the A two point zero, the floor plans. They can just blow it up, we can see a very square feet in between the two rooms on the first floor. And the second floor is completely new, will be those two buildings. And that will house on the right side of the page, an expansion of the bedroom. And on the left side, in the middle, there'll be additional bathroom space, shared bathroom up there. And it's just an expansion of the existing bathroom. And then to the far left is a new bathroom for the primary or master suite. And on A three point zero, the elevations again shaded red pink shows the new, new volumes.
This is on the wheel of the house, correct?
Correct, yes, the front of the house, there's no change. The latter, right, it's just that upper area, backyard. That's second, that's second story, the small connector piece, which is now depending. Yes. Which has spoken to some of the neighbors. One showed up last night to, to their approval. We have two letters here of approval, and I believe one was not mailed.
Who was the lady last night?
At least, I didn't catch her last name, but I think she was the one diagonal to.
Platten Street.
Diagonal on her.
Oh, numbers that she lived at on that Platten Street.
Okay.
Oh, so she's not even that butter.
Yes. Last he's right at the corner, she would be on Platten at the corner of the class.
Oh, she's not.
Yeah, it would be the
First house on the corner.
Eighty-sixth lesson or ninety-fourth lesson, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, so these letters are from Anita Brewer, City Home, screw that up, Six Pulaski, supporting the construction. Patricia Ambrose, Four Pulaski, supporting the construction, and today I received an email from Mary and Bob Foley at One Pulaski, supported. What are any questions? Bob, Rob?
Um, so which part of the house is actually going to be expanded within the non-conforming set? I'm just saying, because I'm looking at the, I know it's not a certified by plot plan, but if I look at the plot plan and I obviously the yard is, is stepped back, but where this is increasing, you have a twenty-eight foot eight. So, so what part of it is within the fifteen foot that's being expanded?
Well, I was informed that you, that you have to take the worst case scenario.
Right.
Well, so, yeah, anything they do to that sideline, they have to apply for a special permit, but for in this instance.
Where the yard steps.
Right, if.
Yeah.
Right, so I guess if the, if the regulations allow for you to take a fifteen yard setback off of each individual property line, I guess it would not.
I understand the property line is step back, the way you're increasing the non-conformity, it's actually, it's okay, right?
Yeah, still requires a special permit, yeah.
We have because.
Because it's in the side setback on that side, even though the setback changes.
Okay, all right.
That doesn't make sense.
Okay, well, I haven't done zoning in this particular town, but, okay.
That was my belief from the start. But the building inspector informed me that it, okay, worst case scenario.
All right, so.
Any more questions?
Uh, no, no, I'm good.
No, I drove by and took a look at it.
Okay.
I'm good.
Is there any member of the public wishes to speak on this application? If you're on Zoom, please raise your hands. Name none, and this look good, and you're not here for this application. With that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Peter Welliser, whatever, Phase Two Design Studio on behalf of Lucy Noish for a special permit under sections 5.4 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to renovate an existing non-conforming structure which encroaches into the side setback by adding thirty-eight square feet on the first floor between two existing sections of the structure, removing the first floor porch, placing it on a foundation to create an office and pushing back the facade several inches to align with the existing mudroom and half bath, and adding a second floor over those sections of the first floor with compliant second floor egress windows to create an additional two hundred and eighty-eight square feet of living space. At Two Pulaski Drive, Assessors Map Number Forty-One, Lot Number Forty-One in District B, filed with the town clerk on July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Based on a finding that the proposed project to renovate the first floor and construct a second floor addition creating two hundred and eighty-eight square feet of additional living space is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure and the requirements and conditions under section twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met, based on the condition that the project is constructed in accordance with the following plans. Proposed site plan prepared by Phase Two Design Studio dated July twenty, twenty twenty-two revised July seventeen, twenty twenty-three, based on the site plan prepared by Old Stone Lot Plan Service LLC dated September seventeen, twenty seventeen. Nois residence plans prepared by Phase Two Design Studio dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, revised July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. E one zero, existing floor plan, E one one, existing elevations, A two point O, proposed floor plan, and A three point O, exterior elevations. Do I have a second? John seconds. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John? John?
Yes.
And Sarah, votes. Who would like to write this? Show me where. Who would like to review?
Oh, you guys.
Jim, would you?
You ready? Charles already got it.
Charles ready, is that the first one you've written?
Wow. I didn't know how to write.
I don't.
So you're all set. We will write the decision within ninety days, and then there's a twenty-day appeal period once we file. You'll be notified when it's filed with the town clerk, and then you'll be notified at the end of the twenty-day appeal period. Um, the building inspector will issue a building permit after it's filed with the town clerk during the appeal period if you want to proceed at your own risk. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Here.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Will Butler Act. So I will open the public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campanelli for a special permit under sections ten point one, twelve point five, twelve point five two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot at additional levels for additional living space and adjust the footprint which will result in, which will result in it encroaching an additional inch into the west side setback and adding a deck which will, which will encroach an additional five inches into the setback and a variance under sections five point five and twelve point four point six of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to allow three stories on a portion of the residential structure which does not exceed thirty-five feet in height at Four Butler's Avenue, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Thirty-Three in District B, filed with the town clerk on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So as the board will recall, we had the application before us, before it was withdrawn without prejudice, and we suggested that it would be more appropriate to have a variance for the three stories that exceed the two and a half, but we still have the special permit on the additions. So I thought that maybe, Brian, if you can go ahead and present to us, we'll probably deal with the special permit first and then the variance, but you can do the whole presentation if you wish.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't sure if you needed me to re-present everything, but if there is someone new on the board, then I guess that makes sense.
What's, what's the board feel?
I, I would just suggest anything that we should know of that has changed since our last meeting. I think we all remember how we left off, but if anything has changed or if there's any new information since then, then we need to know.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, so there really isn't. I mean, I guess just a quick recap, you had asked us to apply for the variance, given we are asking for, you know, a partial third story due in, in most part to the flood zone requirements that we're, you know, raising the house up another foot or so from where it is now for the main living level to comply. Um, nothing else has changed other than we are asking for that variance. You know, the, we haven't changed any of the footprint, any of the heights, uh, anything like that. It was really just about, um, you know, the discussion that we had about the third story and, and the variance that, you know, you guys seem to generally be okay with in our last meeting.
Brian, can you remind me which, which plan number shows the? I guess I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the changes. I guess that's the site plan, you know that, right?
Yes, the site plan shows the, um, you know, addition of a couple of feet on the house and then the deck, which is what encroaches into the side yard.
Okay, will we? Anybody have questions on that?
Oh. Rob, that aside, yeah, but you have some questions. I can't.
Nope, you can.
When, when you say you're going to raise this by a foot, what is the plan to get that raised? How are you, how are you going to achieve that?
So the, it's a split level home currently. Um, apologize if you can hear the siren in the background. Split level home currently, the lowest level of that is kind of their main living floor, and that is a foot below where it needs to be for the flood zone. Um, so we are most likely going to be adding on to the first floor deck and raising it up that foot.
So you don't, you're not going to raise the foundation, you just want to reframe the, the floor up?
Most likely.
And what's that gonna?
We, we, we won't be touching the foundation either way.
Is that gonna, you're gonna have appropriate ceiling height if you do that?
The whole thing is coming up, right? So we're basically, those first floor walls are coming down to be able to do that, right? And then we're going up from there. The, you may not have had the, the background on this before, but the um, current house in the, what we're calling the proposed garage, there is living space now which is obviously below the flood plain, so we're turning that back into a garage, which is what it was originally when the house was built. Um, and then again, there's living space above that, a half story above the main floor. So we're adding another floor to the house, but again, it's a split, a split floor.
Are you required to get a Loma?
Uh, we're trying to get a what?
Loma.
Um, we say Loma.
Right.
What's a Loma?
Yeah.
Yeah, when you have to change the map to the, the flood zone, it's like a FEMA.
Well, we'll need a, we'll need a flood certificate when we're done.
Have you, have you been before Conservation Commission yet?
No, it's, uh, it's coming up, yeah.
Okay, okay. They'll go before Conservation.
So they'll need a map and letter of map amendment to be.
They're not amending the map.
We're not amending anything.
So you're not actually getting.
Conforming, raise it up to fourteen feet above sea level. It's required by FEMA. None of our houses have that.
It's a test case.
Yeah, yeah, given that we're doing a substantial renovation, we have to bring that floor level up.
The old set, Rob?
So the, bringing up the, the one foot level will get you out of the flood zone, high enough to be compliant, essentially?
Correct, yeah, yeah, for, for living space, yes. You're allowed to have a garage, you know, storage space and whatnot in the flood zone or below that level.
Anyone have any questions on a special permit? Um, let's move on to discuss the variance for the three stories versus two and a half. I think our prior discussion was the fact that it was a split level house, um, and it certainly appeared to us that it was three levels, three stories on a certain section, and therefore we felt it was more appropriate to issue, right, the variance, um, with the understanding that because of the wetlands buffers that can't go out and because of the FEMA flood flood zone issues, they're restricting what they can do, even though it's a relatively large lot, it's, it's odd shape and mostly wetlands. Only question?
Yeah, I think the going for the variance, it takes away that gray area where there's, you know, some of us thought maybe it could be, you know, defined as a two and a half story, three story, so I think the variance makes it more clear cut.
Yes, well, it's an easier decision.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's slightly hard.
Takes away that confusion.
It's, um, it's obviously three stories. I mean, you just have to look at the elevation, in spite of what people keep referring it as two and a half stories, it's three stories. First story is the ground level where the garage is, and then it goes up, and so the variance will clarify it and allow them to do what they need to do, and their hardship frankly is because of the floodplain information going up, they, they can't, they have no control over that. And so otherwise, um, they would not be able to basically raise, what they, they could raise the older part of the house, but they couldn't do anything with the other part, and that would be a serious hardship. So I, I, we agreed, we suggested they do a variance.
You decided this last, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's perfectly acceptable, a good way to do it, um, but this way it also makes it clear why we were doing it, which is important.
Right, yeah. Are there any other questions in the variance? Okay. Um, then I will open up to it, up to the public. In my house. Oh, okay, sorry.
Well, because we always say them with a white.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? If so, please raise your hand.
Sarah, I'm the only one on Zoom. Dale?
Thank you. Wow.
Slipped it right through. Be done by seven thirty.
Yep.
Um.
Record.
With that, I'll make a motion, and I'm going to make two motions. One for the special permit and one for the variance. I just decided it is clean.
Yeah.
Um, I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campanelli for a special permit under section seven point two, twelve point five, and twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot at additional levels, including additional mass in the setback, and in addition, encroaching an additional inch into the side setback, adjust the footprint and add a knee second level depth, which will encroach an additional five inches into the side setback. At Four Butler Ave, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Thirty-Three in District B, filed with the town clerk on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, the proposed alteration to the structure will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it's located than the existing non-conforming structure and the requirements and conditions under section twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw for a grant of a special permit have been met, based on the condition that the residential structure renovation is, is constructed in accordance with the following plans. Zoning Board of Appeals Plan Prepared by Gateway Consultants Inc. dated May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Plans prepared by BDS Design Inc. dated five nine twenty-three. C one zero, existing basement plan, basement plan. Z one point one, existing main floor plan. C one point two, proposed garage and foundation plan. Z one point three, proposed entry and level one plan. Z one point four, proposed levels, one point five and two. Z one point five, proposed roof plan. Z one point six, south elevation. Z one point seven, east elevation. Z one point eight, north elevation. Z one point nine, west elevation. Do I have a second?
Second.
You seconded that? Did I get all the plans right?
You did.
Any discussion? Take a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Considerable chess. Um. I further move to approve the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Cam- Campanelli for a variance under sections five point five and twelve point four point six of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to construct three stories on a portion of this split level home with a height of less than thirty-five feet, thirty-five feet, where two and a half stories is allowed. Based on a finding that wetland buffers and FEMA flood zone requirements limit, limit the ability to expand the structure horizontally owing to circumstances relating to the shape and topography of the land, especially affecting such land and structure but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this by law would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, by not allowing expansion of the structure and compliance with the FEMA flood zone requirements, and that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Based on the condition, the residential structure renovation is constructed in accordance with all plans listed above under the conditions for the issuance of a special permit, and the height of the structure does not exceed thirty-five feet above the mean construction grade. Brian, the second?
The second, second.
John seconds. Any discussion? I will take a vote on variance. Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
True.
John?
True.
And Sarah, what just? Okay.
Thank you.
Brian, my favorite.
I'm willing to.
Thank you.
What would you do if you liked, Sarah? Is this going to be two decisions separate, or are they, they're going to be combined?
Be one decision, um, probably two separate parts.
Yeah.
Because it was at the same meeting? So it makes more sense for one decision. Do you agree to that?
Yeah, I think it should be combined.
Yeah, no, okay.
I agree.
Okay. And I'll try to expedite that writing.
Thank you very much.
I would guess it would be prior to the end of September, because I'm gone for two weeks in October.
Do you want me to take? No, never mind. I thought you said, I thought you were going to say gone early September. I was going to say I can draft it for you.
Oh, no, I'm here through the end of, I think through October third, I don't know. Okay, so you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. You missed the whole of thing.
Wow, when do you think it was in the town?
Well, we have been buttered, that was from bringing you here.
Oh, because the, oh, the next door. I think they worked that out.
Must have worked it out.
What did they do? It's nice.
Shit, how's the same height sound?
Yeah.
Um.
Didn't they go, then they just run it, yeah.
So now we move on to administrative items. Apparently I didn't print out the whole agenda. Apparently I didn't print out the whole agenda, um. We have two sets of minutes. And I made changes. I made two minor changes to the ones from June. And that was in the first paragraph, I said. Build a new attached garage such that the new garage will be moved, this is for north. Uh, moved by four feet to increase the distance, I changed the two to from the real lot line to one foot. And then I made a second change. On page. By removing a, a van. Neighborhood in which is located and the requirements rather than in, in, in the, in which is located then and the requirements. Did anybody else have any other changes?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right.
Um.
Captain's good, I'm good.
Um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June twenty-first?
So moved.
Brian moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, I.
Okay.
I, I.
So those are approved. Now. Shortly before the meeting. I sent out substantive changes. To the minutes from July nineteenth. Um. Because what I discovered was that the original meeting, the minutes. Under. One seventeen.
School.
School. Um, reiterated information from the June meeting. And didn't have the motion from the July meeting. So I changed them. Um, I also added in. Under nine Crooked Lane, that Brian was writing the decision and that Sean was reviewing it. Cause that was in my notes.
Who, who's writing the decision, uh, sorry to interrupt you, for the school street one?
It's already been written.
Oh, that's right.
I wrote it.
You wrote, you wrote it, okay.
I wrote both the June decision and the July decision and filed them on the same day.
Okay.
I filed them on August thirtieth.
Okay, so I'm writing.
Nine Crooked Lane. So, is that okay?
Gail, I'll get them to your shoulder.
Great.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of do it.
Um, so.
He's gonna be happy about it.
Do we want to circle the July ones back around for August? Do we wanna vote on them as amended? I.
I've read them, so I'm fine.
I've read, I've read them, and other, and your changes make sense, so.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the July nineteenth minutes as, as amended?
So moved.
Brian moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Jim, just second, vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Let me know if you don't understand what I did, Gail.
I will accept all.
Um, the only other thing, um. So status of decisions, do we only have nine Crooked Lane outstanding?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you approving them? Oh, good lord.
The forty, the forty B appeal.
Yes, it was August fifteenth, correct?
There was a conference on August fifteenth. Um, there is another pre-trial conference on September thirtieth. And there's supposed to be a revised joint order of conditions. Filed on September eleventh, so then the. Person running the HAC hearing. Um. Will look over those again and see if they're finalized on September thirteenth, um. A decision was made that because the expectation is that the public hearing probably won't start until the winter. That they were gonna try to do a site visit in either September or October. Um, she's not, she asked if there was topography. Said yes, topography. You didn't say, it's great because.
Tell her there are snakes there too.
But she didn't wanna do it in the ice.
We've trapped, trapped some ice.
Right, so we're, we're kind of, if, if you kind of look at the timeline, I expect it's gonna. Lang some more, and I don't know how long the hearing's gonna be, but it sounds like the decision won't be around until probably the second half of twenty twenty-five. Um, they just issued, um, a hearing for Weston. Um. And they had closed the public hearing, I think in twenty twenty-one, beginning of twenty twenty-one, and just issued the decision in June.
And what did they decide?
They denied the appeal. Which was.
Inspective?
Uh, uh, no, the, the KP law was the.
The, I mean.
The council for the town when they were appealing it.
So they, they denied the, the town's appeal.
No, sorry, they approved.
The towns.
They, they approved the developer's appeal.
Okay, okay.
Same developer?
No. Yeah.
What is the, uh, what is the process, uh, after that? Is it, it goes to land court?
Yes.
Now, is there any ex- appeal beyond land court other than, uh?
Well, once you get into the court system, you could go all the way up to.
To the state Supreme Court, presumably.
Supreme Court if you wanted to, yeah. Now, the, the, the one in Weston was a little different. Um, because it was, they were trying to protect the Cambridge water supply. But it's in Weston. So there was, and they were arguing state law, not local law. And you can only, your appeal has to be based on local needs. Um, so that's why it's good that they allow the intervenor. Um, for the group of can.
Yeah.
Um, because they're, they're arguing the local, um, environment, the local COMCOM bylaws. Uh, so.
We talked about art-based.
Yeah, art-based, yeah, yeah. So, um, we have one. Oh, do you have a question on that?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to do the timeframe, so you, you anticipate a ruling, the initial ruling from the HAC sometime second half of twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then depending on what happens, it could be years after that too.
It's the start-up technicals. Yeah. Um. The. We have one application for September. Which is twenty-three Eaglehead, which is. Raising the structure and building new.
I don't think.
Or. Yeah, for September.
Gail has something.
Sorry, Gail, go ahead.
Um, is that what I put in your folder?
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I didn't look, that's what you sent me.
I, well, I put, um, the application for next, for September in New York.
Sorry, twenty-three Old Neck.
Thank you, I, yeah, it was.
That's my bad.
Yeah, okay, I was just, um, that doesn't sound familiar to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. No.
Makes more sense, this is the house I was thinking of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, um.
Which house is it?
Non-conforming lot.
Was on the market for a while, off and on.
Yeah.
It's on the right, as you're walking into Eaglehead. It's the only bad-looking house there.
Okay, yeah.
It's amazing what my dress mistake will be, Old Neck versus Eaglehead, that's a half a million.
But it sounds, it appears, it's a non-conforming lot, but it appears as if the new structure conforms. That's what this looks like.
Yeah.
Those haven't been circulated to the board yet, have they?
No, no.
Okay.
I just asked, um. Gail, either this morning or yesterday, whether we had any application for September.
That's September twenty-seventh, is that meeting?
No, it's earlier than that. Third Wednesday.
Okay.
Twenty. So the, I think we can still do the site visit on Tuesday, I, I checked the, when the sun sets and it sets at six forty now. So I think we can sneak that in before it gets black. But I have an all boards meeting at seven.
As does Brian. John, John's there too, aren't you?
And John.
I'm, pardon?
Huh?
September nineteenth at seven o'clock.
Yeah, we're all at the same meeting, where's that gonna be?
Assuming at the school.
Your home trip.
With the school, it's with the school committee, the Essex, FinCon Essex Select Board, Manchester FinCon and Manchester Select Board.
Oh, that's one of those, um. Near meetings.
Yeah, you're required to supply. You're the home court.
There's just two reps for each.
No.
Full, full, full bore.
Full bore, this is a full bore.
Got it.
Yeah. So you're on. Just in case you were trying to squeeze out.
You're on a rant.
Um. Eh, eh, any other, anything else we need to cover?
No.
Um, I have one, I have one thing.
Go ahead, Gail.
I think that we need to move the meeting from the twentieth to the twenty-seventh, I don't have two full weeks. Today's Wednesday, I can't get the public hearing notice in for the eighth and the fifteenth.
That's what I was worried about. That's why I asked if there were any applications, cause I said, oh, it's getting late.
I, I know, I just. It slipped by, guys, sorry.
I, I have, oh, wait a minute. All my calendars all screwed up, I tried to populate my calendar, didn't do it. I have FinCon on the twenty-seventh. I can't do it on the twenty-seventh.
You can do it, any, you can do it. Twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth. We might have MBTA on the twenty-eighth.
Why can't you get it in for the eighth? And fifteen?
It needs to run, um.
Eighteenth and the fifteenth.
The eighth and.
Oh, no, the first and the eighth. No, the eighth and the fifteen, no, first and the eighth.
I'm getting missing.
Yeah, yeah, September first.
It's too, it's too short for the second week, Sarah.
Yeah, we're not fourteen days away.
No.
Okay. Um. So what are people's schedule like the last week in September? Tuesday or Thursday, which is preferable, or, yeah.
I'm, I'm out of town, um. Wednesday to Friday for work.
So the twenty-sixth works then?
Yeah.
Um, I have no lives, so twenty-sixth works for me as well. Any, any new shows coming up on? Oh, no, you're, you're a voting member, yes.
This was your free.
I am free on the twenty-sixth.
Nine twenty-six.
Twenty-six, huh, okay.
Okay, so we need to get, um, room five and sixteen twenty-three studios for that and cancel nine twenty.
I will take care of that, and, um, I'll put it in the tide, so everybody knows we needed to change the date.
And you'll notify.
Uh, the applicant. Yeah.
Okay.
And you have site visits on the twenty-fifth then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have anything, there's no select board on Monday, so twenty-third's gonna be good. I think that's why I moved to, uh.
Oh, I think that's, I have to go to a planning meeting, but that's okay.
It's one site, you can do it.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm, so moved.
Brian moves, second.
I second.
Sean seconds, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm through with break, I'm the champion.
Hey, what time is that, September nineteenth?
Seventeen o'clock, right?
Well, it's, it's.